Good evening, Takahoe. And welcome to the September 10th, 2014 Takahoe Zoning Board of Appeals. What I'd like to do first is we're going to do the roll call. Nancy, please.
Member Scialzo.
Present.
Member DeSalvo.
Present.
Member Palladino.
Present.
Member Berendez.
Present.
Chairman Gallo.
Present.
Okay, the next thing I want to do is a pledge of allegiance. And I'm just going to take a little bit more time than normal, if everyone will bear with me. Today being September 10th. And we all know what this, these dates mean to us. Clearly, to me, three days matter around September 11th. And the September 10th was our last day to live without the worry that we all live with today. And so after that day, that full day of September 10th, things clearly change in our lives and change for our futures. September 11th, obviously, everyone is very well aware of it. This community of Bronxville, Eastchester, and Takahoe has one of the unique factors of three train stations. The train stations, to me, are the bloodline, lifeline, that the outer communities in Westchester, Rockland, New Jersey, and the island all feed into Manhattan. And it's all part of our existence. Whether we work there or not, we all know people. And therefore, this community, along with many others, was impacted. Additionally, this community was impacted because we lost a wonderful resident, a great husband, father, Mike McHugh. And one of the things that people are aware of, and those who aren't aware of, is that Mike McHugh was a village trustee. And to this date, I mean, I haven't done any intense research, but I don't know of any others of the wonderful people that gave their lives to wake us up to how fleeting our freedom is, that whether any of the other souls that passed on were elected officials. But Mike was an elected official, dedicated elected official, gave everything he had to this village, was pursuing higher office. And his, just for those residents who may be new to this community, Mike's picture is in Hall, next to the photographs of the mayors, and are former soldiers that had given their lives and done tremendous heroic acts. And so I encourage anyone who's new in this community to go out and take a look at Mike's smiling face. I knew him lightly, was a great man, and, you know, he will always be in our hearts. And then one more day is September 12th, which I remember as a day of, we were all Americans. You know, we all are, some are Republican, Democrat, Italian-Americans, Irish-Americans, African-Americans, whatever. But on September 12th, 2011, we were all Americans. And that was a feeling that I'll never forget, and I'm sure everyone else will remember it. So we're going to do the pledge, and at the end of the meeting, we'll have a moment of silence. So let's do the pledge and remember our fallen friends. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, so we have a, what we have tonight is, let's go with the approval of the minutes. So everyone has received, we have two approvals. So everyone, I assume, has reviewed them. If there's any changes for the minutes of April 9th, please let me know. Otherwise, I make a motion to approve the minutes for April 9th, 2014. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is the approval of the minutes for our special meeting, August 6th, 2014. If everyone's approved, any changes? If not, I make a motion to approve the minutes of August 6th, 2014. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay. All right, so what we have is we have four applications. Two are adjourned. We were working very hard with the applicants in the work session. So 125 Marbledale Road Special Perm for Auto Body Shop is adjourned, and 28 Hollywood Area Variance for Pool is adjourned. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to call up 109 Marbledale Road Area Variance for Height of the Hotel. Please come to the microphone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Rocco Salerno, attorney for the applicant, Bilwyn Development, which proposes to construct a Marriott Spring Hill Suites Hotel, consisting of 163 rooms, with an accessory swimming pool and a detached, single-story restaurant on the property located at 109 Marbledale Road. With me this evening is Bill Weinberg, the principal of the applicant, and Gary Washauer, the project architect. Our original application, which we presented last month, required two area variances. The first is the rear yard setback. Twenty feet is required by the code, and we propose six feet for the one-story structure that will house the swimming pool. The second variance was a landscape buffer in the rear. Six feet is required, and we proposed varying distances to a minimum of one feet. The proposed structure also exceeds the height permitted by the zoning code. Approximately 657 feet is proposed, while the code permits only 50 feet. However, the applicant anticipates constructing a green building, thus empowering the planning board to grant a bonus of an additional 10 feet in height, without the need for a further variance. The applicant still intends to construct a green building. However, at this early stage of the application process, we are not certain that the project will comply in all respects with the stringent requirements for the height bonus. We have therefore amended our application and re-notice the public hearing for this evening to include the variance for the height that's required. As previously noted, the proposed restaurant complies in all respects with the zoning code. Now, I have submitted a memorandum addressing the five-prong test, which this board must consider in determining whether or not to grant the variance requested. I understand that this memorandum is a part of the record, and at this time, I have nothing to add to it. If the board would like, I will be happy to run through the test again. However, I would simply be repeating that which is already set forth in my submission. If you have any questions regarding the additional variance that we are requesting, I would turn the floor over to Mr. Washauer.
Okay, thank you. Members have questions?
I do. Yes, with regard to the environmental standard bonus, you're saying that you might not meet all the requirements, okay? What requirements do you feel you're going to meet, and what do you feel that you will not meet?
Eric, can you answer that, please?
As was mentioned, we are proposing that this will be a green and sustainable building. And the things that are currently included in the plans are, we are proposing a green roof on a portion of the hotel. We are proposing rainwater recycling for site irrigation that will be accumulated on the roof and then used seasonally. There will be LED site lighting throughout, and that will be designed in a way that there will be no spillage of light off the property line or up into the sky, so we'll preserve night sky. There will be no mechanical equipment on the roof of the hotel. We are proposing photovoltaic panels on a portion of the roof of the hotel. The hotel, all the mechanical systems in the building will be Energy Star, and we're proposing low-flow toilets in the hotel. So those things which are most of the, they hit all of the categories that would qualify for the bonus density from the planning board.
Is there something that you're not going to be doing?
Yes.
That you can think of?
No, not really. I mean, we haven't, we have not yet, at this point, designed the site. So in terms of how we're doing rain gardens and things like that, which are one of the things mentioned, we still have to work through the details of that, and I think that's the thing that Rocco was mentioning. But that will be dealt with when we present to the planning board for site plan approval.
Would it be specified as a lead building design, which is a specific category that meets a somewhat stringent list of qualifications to be considered a lead building? Is that an area where there may be some compromise?
We, at this point, we are not filing as a lead building, but we are meeting a lot of the criteria that is on the lead checklist.
What isn't?
I'd have to go, that's a very involved checklist that I don't have with me. But a lot of the things that I've mentioned in terms of, it's a point, lead is, of course, is a point system. I know you're familiar with it.
Yes.
And there are a lot of categories, and it's very site-specific, project and site-specific. We haven't, we have not done that test at this point. But again, a lot of the things that I've mentioned are all things that are indicated on the lead checklist. And, you know, the, it is a Marriott Spring Hill Suites Hotel, and Marriott has their standards as well. And again, while it's not, doesn't require actual lead certification from NYSERDA, we will still be meeting within the design of the building their stringent requirements as well. So these, I'm a little bit vague, but the specifics of what I'm talking about will be dealt with in extreme detail when we present to the planning board.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Washauer. The hotel's plan right now is 163 rooms, from what I understand. How many of those rooms are on the fifth and highest floor? So if we, let's say we said no, how many of those rooms would you lose?
I believe there are 20, well, let me look at a drawing. There are 35 rooms on the top floor of the building.
So 20% of the, obviously, of the population of the room. So have you considered a different layout of the building that would only be four stories but have the same number of rooms, so you wouldn't have to go for that variance?
In blocking out the site and working out the site planning, in order to do that, would extend the footprint of the building significantly. And when we looked at that, the feasibility of doing that and accommodating the circulation on the site and the parking does not work.
Okay. And would the building be economically viable at 130 rooms? How would that impact the project?
I'd have to yield to my client on that, but the directives that I had in planning the project is 130 rooms would not be viable.
What is a normal, I know Marriott has essentially templates for these hotels. What is sort of the range of rooms on a Spring Hill Suites?
This is their prototype for the Spring Hill Suites.
I will, I'll just add, it's interesting that my wife and I went up to the Cape May area. We stayed in Massachusetts, in an area called Peabody. And we stayed in a hotel there, and my wife actually pointed out that there were two adjoining, it was, Marriott was one, Marriott was five stories. I think it was Hilton was six stories, and it was, and Homewood, I think, was the other one, was also six stories. We just, you know, popped into our heads, and we're there, and we're seeing that from what, that, you know, little bit, we saw that that appears to be more of the norm of what these buildings require. Another thing that, while I'm going on, is that I did speak to a resident who asked about the air conditioning and services, and I don't think we heard on the record where those will be located.
Yeah, the mechanicals, basically, each room is self-sufficient in its mechanical. It's called a PTAC-type unit, which is a unit in the wall, the exterior wall. So each room is handled that way. The common spaces in the lobby is handled, they would have their own condensers, and those have been located on the site, so that rather than put those, normally, those are on the roof. The building also needs, requires a generator, and those things are on the ground, actually, behind the building, in the rear of the building, alongside the pool area.
Even the bathroom exhaust fans will not be on the roof?
Oh, I mean, the, there are some required exhausts that will come through that will come on the roof, but that's a small pipe that you won't see. It's well below the parapet, well below the parapet wall. And there's, those are very low, I mean, there's no real sound out of those. The sound really are the condensers, and of course, the generator makes the sound.
The generator goes on, I think, when there's a power failure or all the time?
Right.
Just a power?
No, just as a power failure, in an emergency situation, correct.
And so that it'll be in the back of the building, those things?
That's correct.
By the pool?
So where the rock wall is?
That's correct. It's all of that, including the portion of the building, the pool area, that is within the 20-foot rear yard setback variance we've asked for, is really tucked into the toe of the hill. There's about a 10-foot wall, somewhere, 8, 10-foot wall, that is on the property line. And then the grade behind the site actually rises fairly steeply another 40 feet or so. So it's a heavily wooded landscaped hill that will not be changed. That'll remain as-is.
We did, just so the public knows, this board, which is an active board, a thorough board, a concerned board, did do a site visit. We were on the property tonight, before tonight's meeting, and that's why we're a little late and apologize to everyone for that, because we ended up spending more time on the property. It's quite large when you walk it. What, the biggest positive surprise to me, when you walk up to that back wall, is that there is a tremendous amount of trees that actually grow out of that wall. Originally, I thought it was a rock, slab-rock wall, and some trees up top, but no, there are trees all along the wall. It's a sloping wall. There's a tremendous amount of greenery there. And basically, the variance that is being requested would go 10 feet above the top of the land there, so 10 feet above the grade. But the amount of blinding is, green blinding is incredible, and hearing that, you know, everything is going to be located down behind the building and the wall, I think, really alleviates any concerns that I was worried about. Is there any more questions for the applicant from the board? Okay, thanks. What I'm going to do is make a motion to reopen the public hearing on the setback and open the public hearing on the height variance. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. The public hearing is now open for the hotel, for both the rear yard setback and the height variance. Is anyone that would like to come up and speak to us and ask us questions or have issues that they're concerned about? Yes, sir. Mr. Marcocchio.
Good evening, Chairman Gallo, members of the board. I'm Luigi Marcocchio, reside at 162 Lake Avenue here in the Village of Takahoe. And I just want to take a little time to speak a little bit about, you know, my thoughts, and I had some questions regarding the hotel. Obviously, a lot of people are talking about it, some like it, and some have some concerns. But generally speaking, I think that having a hotel isn't going to bring kids to the school district, and people are happy about that. It's also going to hopefully generate revenue for the village. Having said that, there are still concerns about the financial viability of this, and I hope that this board, you know, digs into that a little bit. From what I understand, and you said it tonight, Mr. Scialzo, it's going to be 163 units, this building, this hotel. That's a lot of rooms, and at a cost of $25 million is what's been reported in the paper. When you do that math, it works out to $153,374 per room. So I guess my first question would be, what does it cost to build out a hotel room in lower Westchester? And how does this sort of relate to that? And I'm kind of just asking these questions because I want to make sure that a hotel is commercially viable here in the Village of Takahoe. Also, the construction process, what is the duration of the, how long will it take to build it? Is this 18 months, two years, three years? That'll also obviously impact the finances. Also, has Marriott given this hotel the flag officially to operate here? And just, you know, still on the finances here, performa, other performa expenses that, you know, or is that something that we shouldn't even ask for? And revenue projections that would make this board and this village comfortable with a building or a hotel that's financially viable, so that we don't end up somewhere down the road with something that doesn't work? So generally speaking, those are sort of my questions, and if I can get some answers to them, that'd be great. I appreciate your time.
And I ask the applicant, we did go through some of this at our special meeting in August, but I'm going to ask the applicant to come back up to the microphone, please.
Chairman, Mr. Weinberg will address the board. However, I again remind the board that the economic viability of the project is not a factor for this board to consider in determining whether or not to grant the area variances.
I know you did address this, and so I'll ask you to kindly take into consideration that we're now off the summer, and we maybe have to hear again the history of Marriott, their success ratio, what they've done in research, combined with yourself, please.
Okay, it's my pleasure. So my partner in the hotel is the former CEO of Lowe's Hotels, you know, not a small corporation. Marriott doesn't grant a license to operate a Marriott Spring Hill Suites that won't succeed. They do their own study, separate from our own. And it is financially viable. It's, there's never been, of the 400 and change Marriott Spring Hill Suites in business, there's never been one that failed. They don't make a habit of establishing hotels that aren't going to make it. As I said, we did a study, they did a study, I've got an experienced hotel veteran, I've got a great track record in developing. I've worked on this project for over five years, and there's a real dearth of hotels in lower Westchester. We're between Bronxville and Scarsdale that don't have any land for them. We're between the Crestwood and the Takahoe train stations, which create demand. We're adjacent to Sarah Lawrence, Concordia, and Iona Colleges. I mean, there's a whole 300-page report by the top hotel appraiser in the country and the world, HVS. And it's very viable, and I wouldn't be throwing $25 million into it if I didn't think it'd be viable. I've been around this community a long time, and it's not that everyone who stays there is going to have something to do with Takahoe, but it's certainly going to benefit Takahoe. It's going to be a great hotel. It'll be used by business people during the week, weekends, people who come here for weddings, and visit family, see Westchester, to spend money in Westchester for tourism. The Westchester IDA has researched it, and they've offered us a sales and mortgage tax exemption. They feel so strongly in it. It's a great project. It's going to benefit Takahoe, Westchester, New York, and it's not really going to create a lot of traffic. There's not a lot of downsides to it, and there's only pluses. So that's why I'm here.
Does any other members have anything they'd like to say? No? Okay, thank you. Mr. Laurie, one second. I'm going to ask Mr. Marcocchio to come back to the microphone, please. You mentioned the schools, the benefit to the schools. Do you have children in the schools?
Yes, I do.
How many?
What's your point?
I'm just curious, what's your involvement in the schools? You're...
My involvement is, I'm pretty active in the schools, but what's your point?
You understand the pressure that the school is under financially?
Well, considering they have 100 kids going into the kindergarten class this year, when they only expected, you know, 85 or 90, yes.
Yeah, it is.
So having said that, though, while we're on that topic, one of the reasons we have all these kids is because we continue to allow 10-story buildings to be built, you know, one on Main and Marbledale Road, we have more coming in, well, not Takahoe schools, but more coming into Crestwood. So we have to be mindful of that.
Where in Crestwood?
Crestwood Train Station.
And you feel there'll be children in that?
I don't know if I feel there'll be children there. According to the studies, there'll be no children anywhere.
Well, they're one-bedroom apartments. The hotel will pay school tax. You agree with that? They pay school tax like everybody else?
They pay school tax.
Yeah. And so the benefit that you're referring to is that there'll be no children, but there'll be funds from the hotel directly to the schools? Yes?
I think that's fair.
Okay. You live close to the old Revlon building? Was that Revlon building, I remember, I mean, it was a long time ago, but there was going to be a grocery store there, is that?
It was going to be a King's.
A King's grocery store there. And that was stopped.
I was here during those meetings as well.
Right. And then Davis bought the building, was his name, right?
Yeah.
And that was, how long ago do you think that was? 15 years ago? I mean, 10 years ago? 15 years ago, I think it was. If I would have guessed, 15 years. I remember that also. At that time, if I were to guess, the rents of an apartment in Takahoe were probably $1,200 a month, maybe $1,300 a month, tops. And Mr. Davis was coming in with $2,500 a month apartments, which I remember quite clearly, and people had reservations as to whether he would be economically viable. And that, I think, was legitimate, in the sense that those apartments, you know, maybe that was just going to end up being, you know, gone into bankruptcy, and then that building would be flipped over for, you know, other apartments or some other types of things which wouldn't be beneficial compared to $2,500 a month. But Davis is surviving quite well, would you not agree?
He's doing very well, I think.
Do you think that they're paying a lot of taxes at the Revlon building?
I haven't looked at the tax rule yet, but I would assume so.
Okay. So it did, even at a time when there was concern, legitimate concern, about the economic viability of Mr. Davis's project, it did work out and spilled over.
But if I could interject?
Yes.
And you mentioned it, prior to that building, there was a proposal for a supermarket, which at the time was seriously being entertained.
Mm-hmm.
And myself, and many of the same people that are here tonight, came out in, you know, opposing it.
Mm-hmm.
And that was the right thing to do.
Mm-hmm.
And as a result of that, we have a beautiful building there.
Mm-hmm.
That is, you know, a gorgeous building, that commands serious rent, that pays, you know, village taxes and the school district taxes, you know, absolutely. It also, there's also a bus stop in front of that building now, and the bus stops there, kids get on the bus, and they bring...
School bus, you mean?
Yeah, school bus. And they bring them to the school.
Mm-hmm.
So there's definitely an offset to the revenue, no question about it. My point tonight, though, okay, was that, and I started my conversation here by saying there is going to be a financial benefit to the village, no doubt about it. My only concern was if $25 million, you know, to construct this and to develop that building was economically viable. And I think the answer was, yes, it's fine, you know? And I just did a little research based off of, you know, I have a star report here that is hotel-specific in the industry, and I started just looking through it and comparing hotels in White Plains and around. There's another one that's going to be built in... There's another one that's going to be built in Cross County. And just looking at, you know, the RevPAR, what the occupancy rates are, how much they're building rooms for, how much hotels are selling for. And I just wanted to make sure that $25 million is worth it.
One of the things I mentioned at the last meeting is that...
You know what? And maybe it's not even a conversation for this board.
Any conversation, you know, there obviously are limitations as to what we're, you know, allowed to really look at in the zoning and making a decision. But I can speak for this board that I know that this board is deeply concerned about this village and wants to continue the progress. That was done by prior zoning boards, the current village board, prior village boards. And we, you know, it's a factor for us emotionally. And it's something that I've learned in studying the law, that the judges really do give a lot of credence to the zoning board because we're the boots on the ground. We really have our finger on the pulse more than anybody else. And so the judges give a lot of latitude and respect the decisions for or against because of what the zoning boards do. But what I wanted to say was that I, for the last five years or six, seven years, I'm in the transportation business. And I was working for one of the major limousine companies that's located here in the town. And one of the things that I came away totally shocked and surprised was the amount of people that are coming to Bronxville through the colleges. It is incredible. And literally, this limousine company, the transportation company, was shuttling people all the way up to Elmsford to house them because the hotels here were booked. There are a lot of speakers that come to these colleges. These are... Sarah Lawrence is, I think, the most expensive college in the country. And it's, you know, it is prestigious for people to speak there, and people come to hear them in addition to the, obviously, the people that visit for various reasons to visit their children in Inspector College. But I would see carloads and carloads of people going from Sarah Lawrence all the way up to the Elmsford hotels because the ones locally were booked. I also recently drove someone to a hotel in New Rochelle. And he was, you know, his company booked him there, and he wasn't too happy with his hotel. I'll leave that. So he was looking for something. So I've come away before I even heard of this application, believing that there is a demand from Bronxville for a hotel. The Broken Bowl Brewery came and spoke last time and said that he has people that come to visit his brewery, like the winery tastings, and they come from the Northeast, and they're looking for hotels. They ask them, is there a hotel around where we can stay at? And he feels strongly that, you know, that it'll survive. And I believe in Tuckahoe. I really do. And the evidence that we have had here in this village from Main Street and the growth, to me, there's no doubt... I completely believe that this village is pretty enough, sharp enough, to attract people to want to stay in this hotel. My own opinion, based on the studies that have been done, the economic viability to me, while we're not concerned about it, is I don't have any doubt about it. Does anyone want to add anything?
He mentioned, I think, at the last meeting, he reviewed a lot of the occupancy statistics of the surrounding hotels.
He being the applicant?
Yes. And I believe they were in the 80% range, if I'm not mistaken, and consistently so, which is why this area was circled and looked at to benefit from the fact that there's so much spillover. So it was, I think there's a lot of careful thought, and as anyone would when they're sinking in $25 million into a project.
I tell you, it's a great-looking hotel. I saw one... It's, you know, it's in Westchester, I believe. It's nearby, right? The other one? Yeah, I saw a Spring Hill Suites, so, and it looked, you know, it looked very nice. And I wish them a lot of luck, but I just wanted to make sure that it's going to work and that we don't end up with a building that, I don't know, maybe becomes a housing or something, or, you know, puts more kids in a school. So, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Laurie?
Good evening, Mr. Gallo and Board. My name's Anthony Laurie. I've been a member of this village all my life, born and raised here. I please hope I don't get cut off, and I don't see nobody doing this as they did to Mr. Marinella when he was speaking. And you know what? I got to say, Mr. Marinella was not 100% right. He was 200% right. Let me tell you something. I seen that place before it was, all the stuff was dumped in there. When I was going to high school, I worked for a few different contractors. That scares me when you're going to do pile driving or doing any kind of excavation. We worked in the Pelham Schools in the '60s. Took off all the installation, insulation, or excuse me, asbestos off the pipes, the oil burners. In them days, we just used to shovel it on the truck, not even cover the body of the truck, and it's all dumped in there. Behind Mr. Cottola's place, there used to be two bus companies back there. The oil that's dumped in there, the Prestone from radiators, the batteries that are dumped in there. The contractor that I worked for, the amount of stuff we dumped in there on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they used to burn down there. There used to be a big old barn on the top. One Saturday night, it burned right to the ground. Couple of weeks later, they just bulldozed that stuff all in there. When I worked in Burr's Welcome, all the Empren bottles that we used to dump in there, put them in barrels. We had nicknamed the man by the name of Ash Can Al. He used to come every day, pick up the barrels from the floor, and bring them down there into quarry and dump. The stuff that's in there, the toxic stuff that's dumped in there, believe me, it's sickening. Like I said, Mr. Marinella was 200% right. Let me also tell you, I didn't get this gentleman's name, but I just wanted to know, for safety purposes, this firehouse is on the chopping block. Commissioner Dennis Winters is getting ready to close that firehouse. He's talking about it, okay? So if that hook and ladder moves to Bronxville, and that hook and ladder is on a call, you got to get the hook and ladder come all the way from North End down here. You don't have a pumper over here. They closed that pump about 10 years ago. Mr. Winters is talking about saving us taxes. I didn't see my tax bill go down. But we're talking about saving taxes, but we're not worrying about safety. And you're going to build this building here when a firehouse is not far from the hotel? It's going to be closed? I know you got a firehouse up in Waverly. You can come down the hill, but you won't have a hook and ladder here, and you don't have a pumper here. The pumper here, that's just the spare. It sits there. That don't go out on calls. I'm just warning this board, you're going to have a problem over there. I'm against it for... Let me tell you something. When I was a young fellow growing up in this town, the stench that used to come out of that quarry was unbelievable. We used to have raccoons run around our neighborhood like cats and dogs, in and out of sewers all night long, in people's yards and stuff. On a damp day, you couldn't even keep your windows open in your house. I remember my mother used to say, "It's going to rain tomorrow. Close the windows. It's going to be damp." The stench that used to come out of there. Like I says, I don't know what's going to come out of there when they start digging and excavating. And does that go through the walls? I know if you smoke in the house, eventually it goes all through the house. Is those toxic fumes going to come up eventually, go in that hotel building? I only hope for safety purposes, number one, that don't happen. Number two, I hope this firehouse on the chopping block doesn't close. I informed this village board. Monday night, I informed the village board in Bronxville. And last week, you could ask Mr. Mark Cochi, I informed the town board that we're going to have a firehouse closing. And we're going to be in deep trouble, not only just for the hotel, for our own safety purposes in our own small, little village here.
Okay, just stay there, Mr. Laurie. Is this building going to be sprinkled? Okay. Bill, is that correct, the building be sprinkled?
Yes.
Okay. I respect...
Were you aware that this is on the chopping block, Mr. Gallo?
No.
Okay, I'm...
I've known that it's been discussed for a very long time. Yeah, I'm...
And I don't see how the citizens of this whole community, not just Village of Tuckahoe, all the town, doesn't come out and dispute this. How this man gets away with it aggravates me. It boils my blood to see that one man could rule this town and tell us that we're going to close a firehouse for safety, Mr. Gallo. You guys are on this board knowing that you're going to have a hotel built here. I know your minds are set. But get to this board of fire commissioners and let them know you're closing a firehouse for safety. He's talking about saving taxes. We're talking about safety. Yes, there's going to be sprinklers in there. You didn't have to ask that question. I'm aware of that. We've got sprinklers in every major building around here. But you're still going to need rescuing. You're still going to need the firemen. You're still going to need a pumper. You're going to need a hook and ladder or a cherry picker, whichever one you want to call it. You're going to need the service of the firemen and the department. And we're standing by everybody in this village and town and not saying nothing to this man Winters. How he's getting along with it, I don't know. I wish that people would wake up and find out that, God forbid, if their fire... If their home, God forbid, I don't wish them even have a leaf burning in front of their house, that you're not going to have a firehouse in Tuckahoe. And you're going to not have a firehouse if this hotel comes here, that you're going to wait for Waverly to come here, Bronxville or North End, or maybe even Chester Heights.
I hear you, and I understand your passion, and I know where your passion comes from, and I respect it. As far as, you know, the firehouse goes, I think that's really something for the applicant. If they feel that their building would be at risk, they would be... That would be a concern of theirs. But I want to go back to the first part of your story, which is the environmental. My understanding, and I'm just speaking as layman, is that we're getting excavating here. This is just pile driving, a lot of pile driving. And that's why this property hasn't been developed in the past, was because it was a quarry, it requires a lot of pilings, which is very expensive. So in order to get a building there that could generate the revenues to offset the cost. Additionally, in the last meeting, we went very thoroughly through the state DEC. That's the authority that we look to, whether you'll agree with it or not. The state DEC is, they give the blessing. And if they say that what's going to be done environmentally improves the situation from what we have now, meaning that the risk level of anything happening to the residents decreases with this construction, this capping, which is what was also done up at Handle Field, that the DEC will be here to oversee it and will give their stamp of approval that this hazard, I think it's called a brownfield, if I'm correct, is safer after the construction than it is now.
I only hope so because I know there's a lot of stuff dumped in there, a lot of bad, bad stuff. I know, like I told you, I worked for different contractors when I was in high school. And I drove a dump truck for the man, and I dumped a lot, a lot of bad stuff in there. So I only hope...
Let's cap it.
Well, I only hope it's good, but don't forget what I tell you and also to you. You have a chopping block on this firehouse, which has been here since 1924. Dennis Winters hasn't been here since 1924. The man didn't even know what a pickaxe was or a halogen tool. So I'm just telling you, watch this. Not only for that hotel, Mr. Gallo, don't forget, you live right up the street.
And as do you, and...
Yes, and I don't want no fire truck coming to my house, but I do want a fire truck here in this village. And I pay fair amount of taxes like you and everyone else in this village and this whole town.
I will always, and I will admit to you, that as a resident of this block, it is always a comfort to see that firehouse to short distance.
And I wouldn't mind if that siren went off 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning because it doesn't bother me, knowing that they're going to help somebody or bring a life into this country, a baby being born like you saw in Yonkers last week.
Any members have anything to say to Mr. Laurie? Okay. All right, thanks. Anyone else would like to come up and speak about the hotel variances? Anyone? Okay, seeing Mr...
I believe we should first wrap up the SEQA process before we close the public hearing.
Counsel, is that...
Correct, yeah. Mr. Fish was going to be here. Couldn't be here tonight, but he had sent me an email.
But that happens before we close the public hearing?
I think that's incorporated into the public hearing, the SEQA issue.
Oh, is it? Is that the way it is? Whatever, whatever.
That's my understanding. We submitted the EAF form, and I understand, Mr. Fish, the village consultant, and correct me if I'm wrong...
Yeah, I can address that.
...found that there was no negative impact.
Correct, yeah. I have an email from Mr. Fish, and he basically said that he's received the EAF submitted by the applicant, finds it complete, and that there's no large impacts. He also, addressing the brownfield issue, he says, "The planning board will be reviewing its own EAF in detail and will consider any brownfield questions as part of the site plan." He says, "DEC has also confirmed that it will review and approve any remediation plan that may be necessary." And I've actually seen the correspondence between the applicant and DEC. So DEC is involved in this. That's the New York State Agency that handles these things.
Why would we do SEQA before we close the public hearing? I just don't recall.
It was part of discussion. I think it was, we discussed it last time at the last meeting, and I think that was part of our public hearing, so I think we're...
We will go with Counselors, so the public hearing will remain open. Is there anything that the members would like to add? Okay, I am going to read a SEQA resolution in the form of a motion.
I think we need to close the public hearing before we do that, though.
That's my understanding, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, to close it? I was confused.
I wanted to give the public the opportunity to comment on the SEQA process before you close the public hearing.
I understand. So you want me to announce the SEQA?
Correct.
Before I close the public hearing?
Correct.
Oh, okay, now I...
And then take a vote.
Okay, now I... All right. I know. Okay, so the public has just heard the recommendations from Mr. Fish and from our village attorney as to SEQA. The, as he said, and this is, I know this is a major concern, this environmental, and the state will be hand in hand, will be there, I'm sure, probably. I couldn't get... But I've seen this in the past where they actually sometimes have their own trailer there, which is required by the applicant, but maybe not in this situation. But I've seen it in other ones. So I feel comfortable, and I think the rest of the board does, and that we have thoroughly vetted this, and Mr. Marinella made it clear, and Mr. Laurie repeated it, that this property has been something that has been a concern. So, but if anybody wants to make any more comments about, yes, remember?
I thought it might be good for Mr. Weinberg to come up again and just talk about the property. And you've had discussions with the governmental officials about the fact it is a brownfield and some of the incentives you're getting to clean it up and your understanding of what is necessary to make it a safe and operable site. I just want to make sure that it's, again, on the record. You understand what this, what the site is, and you're taking all due caution to make it better than it is today.
Yeah, I go back a long way. In Tuckahoe, my dad had an office on 105 Columbus Avenue when I was five years old. And so we're in Eastchester now. I've been here a long time. I know all the stories and all the history. So I had a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 environmental report done. And if you go by the property now, you'll even see the bore holes, and we had everything tested. It really didn't conclusively come up with all those contaminants, whether they've been leached out of the soil or whatever happened to them over the years. But regardless, we went to the state, and we said there were concerns, and your tax dollars are available for a brownfield cleanup program. And we have entered into that brownfield cleanup program so that any soil that gets disturbed will be trucked to Pennsylvania somewhere. Most of the site will not be disturbed. Most of it will be capped either with concrete or with blacktop. Even when there's plantings, the new soil will have to be a foot high. So what we're doing is taking a site that may or may not be contaminated, and we're making it a clean site. And when we're finished, everything there will be the kind of thing that, you know, kids, grandkids, adults, children, anyone could walk on, could breathe on, could live on. Anyone in the hotel doesn't have to worry. I'll stay there. My dad will stay there. So we're taking a site... So we're taking a site that's had some questionable history and a lot of people have walked away from, and that's part of the cost. And I don't know if the cost is really 25 million or 20 million, but it's a lot of money and we're improving it, we're investing in it, and we're gonna make it a green site. Why, by the way, Ms. Prentice, we're not going to LEED certification is because it costs a lot of money. We're going to LEED standards, but we're not gonna get it LEED certified because it doesn't get us anything. But we are gonna have it to the standards of at least LEED platinum. And it's gonna be a benefit to the community, to Westchester, and it's not gonna be a contaminated site any longer. And anything that is contaminated will be totally capped and everything is supervised by DEC. I got a call today from DEC and you can't imagine the amount of paperwork and expense and people involved in making sure that it's clean. The good news for me is that I get a tax credit for all that. The bad news is it comes from New York State. But the benefit is it turns what may or may not be a contaminated site into one that's no longer a contaminated site. So it's only a win for the village and hopefully it's a win for me, too. And I wouldn't be making this investment and this time and this effort if it wasn't going to be.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, I am going to make a motion to close the public hearing on the setback variances, close the public hearing on the height variance in addition to the discussion of the SEQA. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. I'm gonna read a SEQA resolution in the form of a motion. Based on the application and the applicant's plans dated 2/1814, as submitted to this zoning board of appeals, finds and determines that, one, the setback variances requested are exempt from SEQA review; two, the action taken herein in the height variance is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of SEQA and its implementing regulations; three, the zoning board of appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as the environmental significance of the proposed variance application; four, that the action herein shall not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and it is declared a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action. Attached to this resolution shall be a negative declaration; five, the applicant, in his presentation, has represented that the site is classified as a brown field and as such, the New York State DEC will be involved in this project. This board has not reviewed the issue of the state, of the site being a brown field as the only of the variances before it are the setback variances, which are stated previously are exempt and the height variance. It is expected that the planning board shall address the brown field issues with their review of the site plan. That is my SEQA resolution in the form of a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Nancy, please call the roll.
Member Scalzo.
In favor.
Member DeSalvo.
In favor.
Member Palladino.
In favor.
Member Barrendez.
In favor.
Chairman Gallo.
In favor. Any other comments from the members? Have they had anything? I have worked with our attorney diligently on this application. I have requested a resolution in favor and a resolution in denial to be prepared by the applicant, by our attorney in this application. So that if anything came up, that positive or negative, we would, this board would have the options. I will say that I am, as I said before, extremely proud of this village. I am extraordinarily proud of Main Street and what it has done for this village. And I am completely convinced without a fraction of doubt in my mind, and I've put my due diligence into this, as I know the board has, and as I said, we were at the site and we walked the whole thing to the wall, everything. And, you know, as, as we've stated, the positives here are so tremendous and I really, I can't think of any negatives, to be honest with you. I really can't think of one, not even one. I mean, I rack my brain with it and saying, what's bad here? What's bad? What could possibly happen? Okay, maybe if it's not economically viable, it's something we're not supposed to be look at, but after all the positive things and the wonderful economic activity that has taken place in this village and successes that we've seen, I don't have any doubt. And the quality of the applicant, to me, and I've said this before, I take this into consideration, when an applicant comes to this board, I wanna know, is this a person who has a history of success? You know, it matters to me. You know, we just approve something and to just anybody, but I'm convinced that this applicant is going to succeed and make a safer Marble Dell, change it, and that everybody who owns property on Marble Dell and in this village is gonna benefit from this. So I am going to read an area variance.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sure.
Chairman Gallo. I share many of Chairman Gallo's sentiments and the village board, a long time ago, a couple of years ago, approved changing the zoning of Marble Dell Road and one of the allowed uses was a hotel. So it is something the village board had considered many, many years ago, that a hotel could be built on Marble Dell Road. And I think we're very lucky to have such a quality applicant here proposing a very quality hotel that'll be beautiful. Obviously, most of the public knows Marriott Brand and Spring Hill Suites and they're a very high-class operation and the fact that they're coming to Tuckahoe, I think, is just great for the entire village. And quite honestly, I think we'll beautify a very, you know, kind of ugly, unused section of the village and improve the quality of life for the residents. I know there's a tremendous need for hotels for everyone in the area and as someone who's only lived here since 2002, I'm kind of a newbie compared to a lot of people, 12 years, and I have a lot of out-of-town family that we would use the hotel quite a bit. So I have no doubt about the economic viability of it and excited to have the hotel here. When we actually look at the variances that are being sought, you know, my estimation, I think they're extremely minimal. And I think the architect, quite honestly, could have designed the entire property without the variances, especially the rear yard setback and the area variances. It would have been very easy for him not even to have to come here. But based on careful consideration and creativity in site planning, they wanted to design the hotel and the parking and the entire flow of traffic within the area to maximize parking. So I think by, by granting them these variances, we're actually improving the, the project and we're actually therefore improving the quality of life and the benefit to the, to the public at large here in the village of Tuckahoe. And like Chairman Gallo said, we were all there today and we were looking at the, the houses up on the hill. There's quite a bit of, of height difference and there's quite a bit of trees and shrubbery. So we think that the impact will be fairly minimal. There, of course, is, is always impact to people, but we think it's fairly minimal and therefore, you know, I'm definitely for the hotel as, as currently before us and the variances and pretty excited for it.
Well said. Anyone else like to add anything?
Yeah, I'd like to say something, please.
Sure.
Two people that spoke here today brought up two important points. And that's, one is the taxes with the schools, okay? And taxes to the village and everything to benefit.
Is the microphone on?
Sorry. To benefit the village and to benefit each one of us as taxpayers, okay? The other one is, and the gentleman was quite vociferous and it, I think he was absolutely correct, and that was the environmental impact, okay? As far as taxes with the schools, we're not gonna get hurt. Of course, there's not gonna be any children going because it's a hotel. Any project that goes there, the businessman is taking a chance, but I think this was thought out properly. We just have to hope and wait and see and I think it'll go along great. The other one is the environmental, okay? It's gonna be totally encapsulated, okay? And I think that that's a benefit to the whole village, okay? We've had two people come up that spoke what was dumped there and everything else like that there. And with all the concrete that's gonna be poured there and with all the, you know, asphalt or whatever the topping is for the parking lot is gonna encapsulate it, is it to be a benefit, total benefit to the nearby residents, okay? And it's all the residents of the village.
Well said. Anything else? Okay, I appreciate the work that this board has, has done on this project and the seriousness which they've undertaken. I also wanna just make everyone aware that Member Palladino is our senior member and he and I have had two meetings on our own time with the building department and the village attorney. And I wanna thank him for making the time to do it and he was immediate yes to me when I asked him to, to please come so that we could understand it even better. And so we feel, if I speak for everyone, that we've done our due diligence on this one. This is, you know, this is, is a new board and we, you know, we wanna make sure we do it right and I can assure everyone here that we've taken it very seriously and done everything we can. So I'm gonna read a resolution in the form of a motion, an area variance resolution. The recommendation is for the requested area variances to be granted as the benefit to the applicant for the area variances outweigh the detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. Number one, it is determined it will not be an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood and there will not be a detriment to the nearby properties. With respect to the character of the neighborhood, the proposed hotel/restaurant will improve the present barren site in keeping with the master plan of the village. With respect to whether or not the proposed hotel and requisite rear yard variances pose a detriment to nearby properties, the rear of the subject premises abuts an undeveloped off-site sloping landscape buffer that is over 100 feet in depth in the location and the rear yard variance is sought, where the rear yard variance is sought. The requested variance will therefore have minimal visual impact on the adjoining properties and will afford the applicant the opportunity to increase the landscaping at the entrance to the hotel along Marble Dell Road. It is also proposed that the landscape buffer be reduced on the north end of the property adjacent to the parking lot and the buffer requirement increases to 20 feet. However, the undeveloped off-site sloping landscape buffer is at a depth of over 95 feet. With respect to the height, the building is proposed to be located adjacent to the said sloping property where the grade of the neighboring single-family homes is approximately 40 feet above grade of the proposed hotel and large trees located on said slope are an additional 40 feet or more higher, virtually blocking the views of the proposed hotel. Number two, benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. If the setback variances were not granted, the applicant would have to move the location of the hotel closer to Marble Dell Road and doing so would lose valuable parking and a reduction of landscaping amenities of the project along Marble Dell Road. Further, the applicant has demonstrated that there is a need for the height variance to make the project work as a viable hotel. Number three, requested variances are not substantial. It is determined that the, that the variances are not substantial and that they are only a total of three variances requested by the applicant. Further, the topography of the site in relation to the neighboring properties, off-site sloping landscape buffer approximately 150 feet, 100 feet in depth minimizes the impact of the proposed improvement and renders the requested area variances unsubstantial. Number four, the proposed variances will not have an adverse impact on the physical and environmental condition of the neighborhood in that the site is currently located as a barren field. Tuckahoe's master plan calls for, among other things, a hotel as a recommended use on-site being proposed by the applicant. Having a first-class hotel in Tuckahoe would greatly improve the neighborhood and would be consistent with the master plan. Further, the location is now considered a brown field. Having a hotel and parking area encapsulating the location will greatly improve the site from an environmental perspective. Number five, the alleged difficulty was self-created. However, the applicant has, the applicant has proposed a building on a challenging site that in its conformity with the recommendation of the master plan. The applicant has only requested three variances and based on the topography of the site, the variances are deemed unsubstantial. Thus, even though the difficulty was self-created, the applicant has minimized the non-conformity with the zoning code only by seeking three variances. A recommendation to approve the requested variance with conditions that, one, the applicant shall construct the building with the green building features that are proposed in the applicant's submitted plans dated 8/1814. And granting the variances herein is granted with the condition that the work under such variances be commenced and diligently prosecuted, prosecuted within one year of the granting thereof, failing which said variances shall become null and void. Signed by Ron Gallo, zoning board chairman. That's my, my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Nancy, please. Any other discussion before we call the roll? Yes.
I heard that the construction must be commenced within one year after the filing of this resolution?
After the granting thereof, failing such variances shall become, yes.
Okay, well, we do have the planning process to go through with and I would request that that resolution be revised to reflect that we have one year to commence after receiving all final approvals? I've been in situations where I've been in the planning board for 18 months.
Counsel.
Yeah, that, I just conferred with Mr. William. I think we've done that before in other projects.
How do we do that?
We can amend the.
How?
Your resolution right now.
Okay. I'm in agreement with that, by the way. We have, I just don't mean to, you know, stop you here. We have a very diligent planning board and we know that they, you know, are very thorough and it is an entire possibility that that could happen. I hope it doesn't, but.
So amend your motion to reflect the time period that Mr. Solano suggested.
Which would be a year from when the approvals are granted from the planning board?
Correct.
When you have your final approvals.
Final approvals, municipal authorities are granted.
Correct, so a year, right.
Okay, within one year from the granting. Counsel, I need wordage from you.
From the granting.
Of the final approvals.
Of the final approvals.
Of the planning board and the municipal.
Yeah, just the planning board.
Of the planning board, right.
The planning board.
Okay.
I don't know if they need DEC approvals or whatever.
Well, I don't think they can approve without DEC.
That's correct. That has to come first.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll initial it. I'm gonna read this final sentence. Counsel, please stay at the microphone. The granting the area variances herein is granted in the condition that work under such variance be commenced and diligently prosecuted, prosecuted within one year of the granting of the final approval of the Tuckahoe Planning Board.
That's fine.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other discussion before Nancy calls the roll?
Okay. Member Scalzo.
In favor.
Member DeSalvo.
In favor.
Member Palladino.
In favor.
Member Barrendez.
In favor.
Chairman Gallo.
In favor. Thank you. Congratulations. Get to work.
Thank you very much. You've all spent a tremendous amount of time on this.
Thank you. Thanks for picking Tuckahoe, that's what I said.
Yeah.
Okay, 150 Lake Haven, you please come to the microphone.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Steve Accinelli from Veneroso, Curdo, Schwartz &amp; Curdo, and we respectfully submit this application to your honorable board to appeal a denial of a building permit application review dated August 14, 2014. With respect to our client, HP 150 Lake LLC. With me here tonight is Michael Sinicola on behalf of the owner. The premises consists of a two-story family dwelling. The applicant recently acquired title to the vacant premises and upon consultation with representatives for the village, made application by petition to the village board of trustees for a zone change. The prior zone for the premises was industrial and the applicant's petition, which was granted, resulted in the rezoning of the premises from industrial to residential B, thereby permitting two family uses. This rezoning resulted in a reclassification of the premises in a manner that constitutes a less intense use than previously permitted under an industrial zone, eliminating potentially desirable, less desirable uses relative to the area that would have permitted, been permitted as of right. And this, this use is more. And this, this use is more consistent with the character of both the existing structure and the adjacent neighborhood. As part of the application, I did prepare a statement of principal points which outline the five points of law and my responses to those points. With the board's permission, I will not read those and go over those again, but if the board would like, I would, I'm more than happy to go through the five points of law.
We have them in your paperwork, correct?
Correct.
Isn't, I don't feel it's necessary as anyone else would like him to read them? We have them, we can review and file them.
What, I would like to take a moment because I understand that there is some concern by the board and perhaps members of the community about the possibility or the intention to use this property as a three-family in connection with the finishing of the basement as an accessory use to the first-floor apartment. And I'd like to go on record stating that, you know, that is not my client's intention. There will not, there will be no kitchen or cooking facility in the basement. The basement will have a storage room, it will have a common laundry area, and then it will be a finished area, the balance of which will be for the use of the first-floor apartment. There is no intention to put in an illegal third family. That will not happen. My client is here, more than happy to go on the record. I do believe that he, in fact, has leases already signed which are contingent upon the approval of this application by the board to, for two families. I'm here to answer any questions about the use and occupancy of the building, as is my client.
The leases, here's what I, one of the things I, I mean, this is a little tough to understand. I mean, I've been trying to get my arms around this one, but, so if you have two apartments, both apartments will have access to this or only one apartment will?
Only one apartment will have access to the finished portion of the basement, but both apartments will have access to the common laundry facility.
Is there a floor-area ratio, Mr. Building Inspector? Is it, in order to put a common laundry, does it require an additional floor-area ratio? Is that, or is that, you know, is it living, is it, how is that viewed? As living space or? So the variance requested is not necessarily directly for the laundry, so if you were to say that the two leases are contingent, I would say only one is contingent. Would I be wrong in saying that?
Well, what I meant is he has leases with the two tenants--
Mm-hmm.
--who are going to be occupying the building. There will be no third tenant. There will be no third family.
I understand. But I'm just saying, when you said it's contingent on this approval--
Well, of course, well, you're, I'm, correct. Well, the pricing, et cetera, in the lease for the first--
One of the apartments is not--
Presumably includes the finished basement.
One needs a variance, the other does.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the board for the applicant?
Yeah, this is more a question for, for Mr. Williams. The, one of the things in question is the floor-area ratio. Do they need approval from us even if the floor-area ratio is over .5 without the basement? I guess what I'm trying to understand is they are going for two-family unit, but they may be over the .5 floor ratio just as the building's constructed today, even excluding looking at the basement. Would they still need approval from us?
No, they wouldn't. It's only the basement that needs the approval.
So even if they're at .6 with the first two?
On the second floor, that would be--
They wouldn't need approval?
Correct, because it's an, it's an existing building that was there, and it was there when they applied for the zone change, but the basement was not part of the zone change because it wasn't finished at the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion open a public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you can sit down for a minute. Thank you. Public hearing on 150 Lake is now open. Does anyone would like to come to the microphone? Yes, sir. Please approach the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Joe Hendren, Seventh Cedar Street, Tocco, New York. I just want to read a letter that I had kind of prepared to kind of help me along on this.
Sure.
And I'll just start by saying, having become a little bit more informed since receiving the legal notice, I now realize that by adding a bathroom and a playroom, it becomes livable space, which increases the floor-to-area ratio. Thus, the denial by the building inspector to grant a permit to construct a bathroom and a playroom in the basement, and now we have the appeal. For the following reasons, I believe the appeal should be denied. Certainly, the building is big enough. Why do we want to expand it? If you allow a bathroom and a playroom, it would finish the basement. Since the basement right now has a separate entrance, the finished basement could tempt the owner to rent the basement with the separate entrance. It should also be noted that upon completion of the conversion of the, to rental, I have noticed that there would be three meters, a first floor, a second floor, and a basement for what that's worth. I, as a neighbor, do not think this appeal should be granted as it might trend towards three-floor rental instead of a two-floor rental, if rental is the direction that the owner is contemplating. It is certainly possible to add another rental, meaning three floors, especially with a separate entrance to the basement. It is not a good precedent to set for the village, as it will continue to create another burden for the Building Department to monitor three-family dwellings and two-family homes. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hendren, just stay there a second. I just want to, we, this board cannot deny someone because we think they may make an illegal apartment. A third meter is also allowed in rentals. It's called a landlord meter, just the electric meter, for lighting that's required and, you know, outdoor lighting, that type of thing for safety reasons. So because a landlord does have a third meter, doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be an illegal apartment. Additionally, one of the things we did look at on the plans was whether there was going to be a shower in this bathroom, and according to the plans, there are not going to be. However, this board is very concerned, and we will, you know, continue to follow through and work with the Building Department before we make any decisions. Does anyone would like to say something? Mr. Hendren?
I was just--
And also, I believe--
Let me ask you one quick question.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Why the denial?
That's the normal thing. So if you--
It meant nothing other than to let the neighborhood know that--
No, no, it means that they are asking for something that is larger in space than is under the law. As a zoning board, we get this all the time, which means that people get denied all the time because we have houses that were built a long time ago. This one wasn't, but many times people's houses are built close to the property lines. The new laws don't allow that, so if someone even wants to put a walkway or something, expand their walkway or their porch just a little bit, they'll get denied. And then they have to come to us and say, it's, you know, it's minimal, it's a small effect, there's no big problem here, and we, you know, generally approve those type of things. But denials are very common in a village such as ours that's very old and was built before there were zoning laws in place. A lot of the houses were built before there were zoning laws. So, and then the current zoning laws were made stricter and stricter to curtail new construction during the housing booms so that when people want to do any modifications to their houses, they get denied pretty, pretty easily, and they end up in front of this board.
Well, it's just a temptation once, or the verb that you see, once they put a bathroom in there, it's--
We were very well aware.
Yeah, well, it makes the neighborhood kind of aware.
Member Nick, you want to say something?
Sure.
And it wasn't, I believe there was a problem in the general area too, where there was a time where you found a shower, a basement, you know, bathroom put in, they had to tear the whole thing.
That's true, and but--
So, you know--
This building department--
Be made aware.
This building department's been very diligent, in my understanding and experience, in finding those illegal apartments and closing them down. Remember DeSalvo?
Yeah, there's no intention to put a kitchen in the basement, correct?
Correct.
And as far as the layout of the basement, is it an open floor, or are you planning on creating any separate rooms down there?
It's an open floor, but there is raw storage, which is one of the plans.
Okay.
So there is a room that is constructed called the storage room.
All right, let's hear the rest of the, thank you, Mr. Hendren. Anybody else would like to come up and speak?
Chairman Gallo, members of the board are going to come up and speak about every application tonight.
More than welcome.
Luigi Marcucci, 162 Lake Avenue. So you heard what Joe had to say, and, I mean, that's generally the concern in the neighborhood. You know, we don't necessarily think they're going to, you know, do something nefarious there, but we are concerned. So I think you kind of hit it on the head, and you said you would, you know, look at this, speak to the Building Department, maybe speak to the builders here, just to make sure that it's not going to be, you know, an illegal three-family house or something along those lines. If it's a bathroom in a space, that's one thing. If it's something, you know, more than that, I think there's real concern there because, you know, there become parking issues, there become more people that can live there, a whole host of issues come up, so.
Just so you know, Mr. Marcucci, in our work session, what I feel comfortable doing is holding this application over, and I would like to do a site visit for the board in the next meeting so that the zoning board actually goes in and sees the property.
It's a good idea.
Okay.
Mr., I do have a question, Mr. Marcucci. Were you guys aware of the zoning change that happened at the Village Board on this property? Were you guys, you know, and you participated in discussion or made comments?
Yes. Yep, we were okay with that.
And you were generally in favor of going to the rez B?
Yeah, you know, we thought it was a good idea. It was, it was previously an industrial zone. It's a small piece of property, so there's not much industry that can go on there anyway. But nonetheless, I think it makes more sense conforming to the neighborhood and being, you know, an R2 zone, so we didn't necessarily have a problem with that. And they are making improvements there, and I think it's going to be an enhancement to the, to the community, so we're definitely in favor of that.
Have you noticed any significant changes since the conversion of the property?
No. Other than construction, no.
Is there an as of right--
Give me your microphone.
Is there an as of right in terms of how many bedrooms are permitted in a two-family?
Mr. Williams? I think it has to do with the square footage. Is that correct?
Yes, I know.
So it depends on the square footage.
What is the as of right for, there are 1,100 square feet each of these apartments, so--
As long as the bedrooms meet the minimum requirement by the state code, then that's what determines the number of bedrooms that's allowed in the building.
Would you say that at 1,100 square feet, three bedrooms is probably its maximum?
The minimum bedroom size is only 70 square feet.
Under the state law or is that a village law?
No, state law, which is only seven by 10.
Wow.
And I believe Mr. Williams would have reviewed the plans with respect to that and would have denied him on that if the bedrooms were too small.
Correct. Also be advised that there was originally seven parking spaces on the site, and we now have it down to four, and the applicant has agreed to put the buffer in that's required in the rez B zone for the two-family.
Sure.
Is, is a, it says playroom and a bathroom in the, in the basement. Is a bedroom permitted in the basement?
Mr. Williams?
Thanks.
Okay.
It cannot legally be used as a bedroom. That's--
Anyone else want to come up to the microphone and speak on Lake? Yes, sir, come up and state your name and address for the mic, for the record, please.
How you doing? My name is Steve Leoni, Ninth Cedar Street, Tocco. We were all aware that it was changing from a residential B, excuse me, from commercial to residential B, and we were very happy about it. But the past people who built that building, we all watched them build a building. We had a great relationship with everybody that's been in there, and we're very happy that you're coming in, and we're happy that it's going to be a two-family. We are concerned about the parking. We are concerned about extra people living in places where there's no need to be. I think, you're the new, the new guy on that block. I've been there 28 years. So we just want to make sure everything's okay. You know, we have our kids still playing there, our grandkids playing there. We just want to make sure everything's going to be right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to make a motion to keep the public hearing open, hold this application over, and, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, may I make a few more comments?
Sure.
Just because I'd like to respond to some of the things that, that folks here have brought up, you know, with respect to the meters, while we talked about it in the workshop session for the benefit of the others, you know, the reason for the three meters is, you know, for economics and expediency's sake, my client chose to work with the, with the systems that existed, that do exist in the building. And that being said, the landlord meter, which is the third meter, is necessary and required since, since there is only one boiler and the laundry room is a common area. So those items have to be separately metered and could not be metered to either of the two-tenant meters. So that's why there is a third meter there. I know people look at, you know, they see three electrical meters, and they start to get nervous, and they think, oh, you know, this is going to be a, you know, three-family. That's, that's not the case. Also, you know, with respect to, again, this, this whole concern over, you know, an illegal three, the, there is an enforcement mechanism in place through the village and the Building Department to enforce the building code. And also, you know, this board does have the authority to impose certain conditions in connection with an approval, should this board decide to approve it. You know, my client has nothing to hide. He has every intention on being a good neighbor, and any, any conditions that the board wishes to impose in connection with this concern is not something that we would object to.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion to continue the public hearing, leave it open. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So again, we're going to do a, you can work it out with the, the Building Inspector and the Village Attorney. We will probably come at around 6:15, probably the same time. To that, we have two site visits to do at that time, but I don't expect it to be a lot of time.
It would be before next month's meeting?
Yeah, a couple, you know, that, the same night--
Okay.
At 6:15, either 6:15 or 6:30, depending, you know, on which one we go to first or something like that.
Okay.
Okay?
Understood. Thank you.
All right, great. Everyone's okay with that? All right? All right, there was a very successful meeting. I appreciate all the work that everyone's done, especially the Village Attorney and the Building Department. I am going to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, we're going to, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're going to do a moment of silence, and we're going to ask you, gentlemen, if you can please just stay for one second. I'm just going to ask for everyone to stand for a moment of silence for 9/11. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.